Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on October twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, at six oh five P.M. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright, followed by an invocation by Paul Lovato. If you can please remain standing.
Everyone face the flag. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father God, we're checking in with you. We acknowledge you, Father. We thank you for the mayor, for city council, for everyone here. And in reality, Father, we're family, familia, Father, and we don't need to be biologically connected. We're connected by the blood of Jesus, Father. I thank you so much for just allowing us to have this beautiful building, to be here, Father, and to check in with you, to acknowledge you, Father. I pray for the mayor, for city council, to give him clarity, to give him vision, to give him boldness, because they have a lot of weight in the decisions they're making, Father, and we pray for them, to give them the gift of discernment, to think before they speak. We thank you so much for loving us and forgiving us and just allowing us another day through your precious son, Jesus, through the Holy Spirit, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you to Frank and also Paul as well. Thank you, Paul. All right, so Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I'm here.
Councilmember Macquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Huckes, not a city clerk.
Brooke McKinney, Treasury Operations Division Manager.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Tom DeSantis, Assistant City Manager.
Alan Brock, Community Development Director.
Joel Anavero, Chief of Police.
Abdul Alen Fire Chief.
Thank you, staff. It is now time for public comments on matters on the agenda only. This is a special meeting, so it's just like a study session. It's only on items on the agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per person. Please complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the city clerk. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the city council in general. I ask that all speakers keep their comments respectful towards each other. Also, when you see the little monitor for thirty seconds, just to wrap up your comments. And that's pretty much it. So, Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
So far, we have thirteen. The first three are Stephen A. Figueroa, Paul Lovato, and Jerry Hernandez.
All right, come on. And just a friendly reminder, it's just in regards to the items on the agenda, whether the ban or the new ordinance. Good evening, Steve.
So I can't say, "Go Dodgers." All right. You know, the decision you make here tonight, like other cities, is going to affect the surrounding area. And I'm here in support of this decision because it's going to finally regulate what is already out there. It reminds me of watching the old movies that we used to watch on prohibition, where finally people came to the decision, you know, this is silly. Government policy that is impacting our lives in such a negative way, and we have a chance to make the difference on this policy that has been, I don't know, hindered our country for almost a hundred years. So I want to thank the Moreno Valley for boldly taking up the issue and taking the lead of the big cities in the Riverside County. And I was at the county theme. They're all going to follow your lead to see what you do and how you do it with this ordinance. And, you know, I think it's a great approach. I appreciate the open dialogue. Everybody does it. The open is the transparency. And I've read the ordinance and appreciate it and fully support it and just want to thank you for taking the lead on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next speaker, Paul, please.
Followed by Jer-
Good evening.
Good evening, Paul.
I like that word, "family," familia. And we're actually all family in this building. And anything that you guys do, that you vote on, there's always going to be people that don't like it. I'm not for this because I actually live right there where there's kids, suiciders, cutters, a lot of different situations. And we can't judge anyone because they're in different steps of their walk and nobody puts a gun to their head to do what they want to do. But why do we have to expedite this situation? Why do we have to be the leaders of that? Our city, God is blessing this city. We're doing good. There's a lot of good things going on here. We don't need it. We don't need it. And you guys have that weight to make that decision. And like my brother here just said, it sounded real cool what he said, transparency and everything else and taking a bold step. But why do we have to be the ones? And I know it's going to come about in eighteen. All this thing's going to come about again and they're going to be selling it everywhere. But why do we have to be the ones to do it in the city? It's going to affect a lot of kids here. So I would just like, and I hope that all of you prayed about this situation because it's a lot of weight for you to stand up and sit right there and do it. So I pray for you. My church prays for you, for clarity, for vision, for boldness, for courage, that you do stand up and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next speaker is Jerry, followed by Sebastian and Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. My name is Jerry Hernandez. I was born in nineteen eighty-four. I'm from Moreno Valley, same as the city. I love this city. I have seen some of the good things, some of the bad things. And I'm talking about the agenda. I oppose, I do oppose legalized, the expediting of the marijuana. I myself know what it is to do, smoke weed. I know what it is to associate with that lifestyle, with those, with that, everything that revolves around that. And I can honestly say that I know what it is not to do that. And honestly, I like the life that I live now. I like the friends that I have now. I like the mentality that I have now, the drive, the... I like my lifestyle a whole lot better now. And I choose that. And then also, also that leadership is important. Leadership is important. We see for the people, leadership is important because based on the values and the standards that the leadership holds, the principles, that is how the people are affected. And we know we could look at the history and we can see where that... Just because you're a city today, we're a city today, doesn't mean we're going to be here tomorrow. And we see that, we see people come and go, people groups, different nations coming up. You know, look at the Germans, where they at today? Look at the Romans, they once conquered the whole world, where they at today? They're not even, Italians are not even in New York like they used to be. And that's a whole nother discussion. But the point is that, you know, ultimately, God is in control. It's like that sign says, "In God we trust," and God is in control. And He has the last word. You know, we can do our best, but I know that I'm nothing and I know that I'm just a vapor passing through. And it's bigger than me, it's bigger than us today. It's about the standing up and making the right decision for the people. And that's bigger than us. And that will keep us going forward with the right momentum, the right motives, the right heart condition for the people. Thank you, guys. God bless.
Thank you, Jerry, and thank you for coming out. Thank you. We have Sebastian, Bob, and Asli.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening, Sebastian. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian. I attend Value View High School. I found it unacceptable that the conversation on the matter of marijuana was sidelined last week after the staff report and failed to mention anything on the police report. The staff report focused on how marijuana dispensaries would bring in more of an income for our city, which many viewed as beneficial. Today, I voiced my concern on why marijuana dispensaries would be more detrimental than beneficial to our rapidly growing city. As I've mentioned before, the public was not able to hear the opposing side to this pressing issue. It wasn't even mentioned that the last meeting, that at the last meeting, that crime rates rise as a direct result of dispensaries opening. For example, marijuana legalization in the states of Colorado and Washington have shown that by opening up dispensaries, we're not only increased crime, but have also had a negative impact on generations to come surrounding the use of drugs. The most concerning issue surrounding the legislation promoting marijuana dispensaries is the unaccountable reliance on cash-only payments. Since marijuana is an illegal drug at the federal level, marijuana dispensaries cannot put their earnings in banks. Therefore, any profits the dispensaries produce cannot be taxed in a reliable way, which defeats the entire purpose of the dispensaries in the first place. As a young person, I am far more focused on providing a safe future for generations to come rather than finding a dangerous way to provide tax revenue. At the end of the day, this is an issue where we must create a cost-benefit analysis in order to make the best decision possible. Clearly, I believe the cost of legalizing marijuana dispensaries in my hometown outweigh the benefits. My goal is a shared goal amongst many Americans. I hope for a safe, a healthy, and an ethical society, not just for myself and my family, but for future generations to inherit and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian.
Good evening, council, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Whether we like it or not, for it or against it, it's here. January first. You know, we either let the black market control it or the city puts the ordinances like they asked staff to do, you know, to get it together. You know, Rancho Cucamonga and Upland, it's costing the city a lot of money because, you know, all the pot shops and, you know, they got the police. So we need the revenue. We're going to deal with it one way or the other. And I think Mayor Gutierrez and Mayor Pro Tem Baca have taken the right steps, telling the staff to get it together and let's move forward. Any delay is only allow the black market to step in. You know, we're going to flip the coin, heads or tails. But if we're in control, we can do it to the benefit of this city. You know, kids are smoking pot anyway. At least we're going to have control a bit. I mean, you know, right now, the ones that are here, there's lawtering in front of them. You know, there's no law. We either put a nip to it or it'll be like tombstone, you know, with no control. So I think you're doing the right thing, though, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. And we got to do it. And all of you council members got to get together. The opposition, if we don't do it, and then the black market comes in, the state allows anybody just to do whatever they want, then who are they going to point the finger at? You're not going to point it at yourselves. So let's do it. Let's take care of it. You don't like it? Well, make it the best you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next speaker we have is Asli, Frank, and Tom.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council member staff. My name is Asli Rivera and I'm here. Topic, I'd like to start off with, it is here to stay. Marijuana has been here forever and will continue to be as a herb and healing comes through it also. But what I want to focus on is the taxing moving forward. We already know that this is coming. And January first comes, it's here. And we have nothing to say about it. The taxing, we need to make sure that it's going towards the right direction. If we're putting it towards, making sure that there's facilities where abuse control can go, they can go into it and control their abuse of, not just marijuana, but there is more potent drugs out there that we need to also be aware of. And it's affecting our streets, the homelessness, that there's people out there, like, in need of our help and we need to help them. And we also need to educate our people that there's stuff going on and marijuana is already passing. We need to educate on who's taking it, what they're taking, because it's different for every person. We need to make sure that there's, that there's, with this taxation on marijuana, that it goes into the right direction because it's for the people. And taxing things unfortunately has gone overwhelming here in California and I'm sure you would all agree. Just, this is something that I saw that it needs to be addressed and taxing, where the money is going to, if you guys could please pay attention to that. We are the first, one of the first cities here to continue this ordinance. So please pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Asli. I just want to say thank you to all the young people that are out here, whether you're opposing it or for it. I think you're all doing a great job. Thank you. Frank?
I'm Robert Pro Tem, council members. Marijuana sounds fine, very phonic sound. It's like a medicine that you take that cares for the present conditions, but the aftereffects are horrendous. Here's a report by Joe's Law, Joe Apero, lawyer, the sheriff in Arizona, that the governor just deprived, or the... Excuse me, the president reprieved. He can tell you how bad marijuana is. There are gangs that are approaching, fighting on both sides of the borders. The cartel is enormous, a lot of control because there's money in it. It attracts young generations. There's a body of young teenagers on both sides of the border that have been isolated, caught shot, laying in the road because of the gangs fighting each other. It draws the people who can make more money, but it takes them away from the rights of their own lives. Joe Apero had a lot of criminals that were pushing crime of marijuana and he was trying to lead them into a righteous way of life. That was his objective down there. That's what we have to do here today. But if we let marijuana come in, it would be so bad for us. Our officers today have enough on their hands to take care of. With a cartel of gangs in here with all the crime on marijuana, we won't have the support that we need. And the prices are going to skyride, high ride. We're going to be out of control. We're going to be marked as a black city. This is dangerous stuff, marijuana, no matter who it is because it involves not only the young kids, but it involves politicians, even the higher cartel of, or rather, higher politicians in the government. It's very disastrous. It's all in here. We have to make a decision as a rightful people from Moreno Valley. And that's what we have picked you to do, to make a proper decision for the kids that are coming out of high school. They'll have a direction to go to the right way and not using marijuana. This is dangerous, believe me. I can't express how dangerous marijuana can be. It's your choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Tom Gerald, followed by Brenda, and then Robert. And just a friendly reminder, this is the opportunity to speak on the two items that are on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak, please submit that blue speaker slip. Go ahead.
Tom Gerald, speaking up half myself and a little bit for the Sundance Center. It's had some issues with related businesses. I, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Pro Tem Baca, council members, members of staff and the public both here in the chambers and listening at home or on M V three TV or the internet. Thank you for conducting this hearing. I'm going to leave, I've got about a, oh, just about a four-page document. I've got a copy for each of the council people and one for the city manager and city attorney with some of the effects. I got it late this afternoon from my girlfriend. She has her master's degree and actually several things that she... But she works as a social worker with development disabled people. She pulled this down for us. Oh, there you go. There's seven copies there. And but as I said previously, my primary concern remains the effects on children's development under eighteen, which is sites. I can get you a little more information. She didn't get all her source data on there because I told her to keep it simple. I don't want to overburden you. I'm sure you've got a lot of stuff to look at. But that's my greatest concern. As I said, about forty-five thousand kids in this valley under eighteen. Even if five percent of them get their head in a bag, you know, it's a pretty big effect there. I hearken back to meeting two young men, probably fourteen, fifteen, that while they were lighting up in front of our center and I asked them not to do it. And oddly enough, we ended up talking about the Bible. But the one story that really caught their ears was the talking donkey. So that seemed to be their greatest interest level. But in any event, you know, they didn't seem like the type of people to be designing stuff for the, with the new giant headquarters there. You know, they didn't look like they were the brightest bulbs on the planet there. So and then, so how will we protect our kids, you know, from getting into this stuff? Because it'll happen. I mean, it just happens and it's human nature. And then also, a big issue with me is what's going to be done to those operating illegally? Well, have been, are they going to be allowed to continue? Are they going to be rewarded? I mean, it really fries me when I got twenty tenants that are all pull their C O's and went through all the pains and got all their equipment, got all their inspections and, you know, and they're struggling to make rent each month and, you know, put food on the table and support their families. So and the secondhand smoke issue is a big issue. When we had an illegal operator who came in under false pretenses, we were getting smoked three doors away and the church said, it was a church, so the kids were getting sick. Well, I don't think, I think it was stoned. And so my neighbor has a problem with kids smoking on the back, there's like a trail back there. He's at least a hundred feet away. And when they get going, it, you know, it's enough to give them a little buzz. So it's an issue. And in closing, you know, a lot of it was supposed to solve all our economic problems with school district. Then our school system district just asked for a four-hundred-million-dollar bond, what, a year ago? Say they needed it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brenda, Robert, and Rafael. So Brenda? Hi, Brenda.
I just want to say I'm for it. For medical reasons, I suffer with arthritis.
And if you could just move your mic up a little.
Okay. I'm sorry. I suffer with arthritis. My husband is glaucoma. He's, marijuana helps him. We have to go out to city to get it. And, you know, I'm not, never been a drug user or anything, so that's off the record. So and I'm not associated with any kind of drugs. So I'm for it a hundred percent and for medical reasons. I'm a senior and I'm sure there's a lot of other seniors out there that is for it too for medical reasons. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda, for coming out tonight. Thank you. Robert? Good evening, Robert.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I just wanted to, Frank was talking about his book that he had about Sheriff Joe or something like that. I hope it wasn't Sheriff Joe Apio. Anyway, if you ask any police officer, and I have nothing against police about marijuana, they will be completely against it. It's just like a knee-jerk reaction. And it's almost like asking somebody at the Department of Defense, is it okay to cut their budget? You know, a knee-jerk reaction, no, of course you can't cut our budget. I just think that, I think cannabis should be approved tonight. Cannabis, I'm a E R nurse and I've worked in the E R for twenty years. And where I saw most of our problems was with alcohol. I mean, after a certain time of night, everything, or not everything, but most of our people coming in were related to accidents, you know, violence between husbands and wives and just things like that. And when people use cannabis, and just cannabis alone, if you mix alcohol and cannabis, you could still have a mean person. But people that use cannabis, you know, the main thing that they're really concerned about is like, where can I get a pizza and is there any Twinkies in the cupboard? And, you know, when they said, the police report said that, oh, violence just shot up. I'm thinking, I would like to see the methodology of that study because I would like to know, did they also check to see if that person was using alcohol? So and I've got news for the people that are talking about, oh, what about the kids? Kids are smoking marijuana right now. And, yeah, they are. And whether it's legal or not, I think it's better if we're not going after young people and I talk about young people like even somebody that's under twenty-five. So I don't want those people getting something on their record that's going to carry on for the rest of their life. And every time they go to apply for a job, it's like, oh, well, you were in possession of a controlled substance. I think we need to get away from all that stuff. Our courts are completely plugged up with ridiculous stuff. And when you see a young person and, you know, they've smoked a little marijuana or whatever they've done with it, it's not a big deal. So anyway, I hope you'll approve it tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Next speaker is Rafael, Louise, and Roy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, guests, and residents. I went through the whole forty-three pages, the packet. I went through each page and I found it interesting on what the staff needs to keep our city safe and our adults and children. They're asking for strict rules and I welcome that. If we're going to do business in this city, we want to know, we want to make sure that entrepreneurs know our law and our rules. That's very important. Since they mentioned it's going to be law in twenty eighteen, we can't stop it because according to what I read on page ten, we already have thirty-eight cities in our state that have already approved measures of taxing it. So they passed, except for one city. So it was already happening. Now, what I didn't read in the packet was holding landlords accountable to allowing tenants that sell marijuana. I didn't see also where they stopped them from painting the windows black, like I'm supposed to. There's a dispensary there that has all their windows black. I don't know who's in that building. I don't know if there's a minor buying marijuana or not because we know that nineteen-year-old men, nineteen-year-old, younger adults look like men today with all their beer and everything. So we don't know who walked into that building. And I'm not sure if anybody's getting card, okay? The other thing is that I don't see a barrier, three hundred feet, six hundred feet, a thousand feet from the churches that is there now in the United States post office. I don't see that also in the packet. So what I'm looking for is you five to approve the city's attorney's request to allow this to be really, really looked at and make sure that we also have town hall meetings during that period of time to allow the residents to come and put their input because not everything that the staff put in, it's in here because I saw things that were not put in here. See, I go to the planning commission and what I like about the planning commission, they make you go through the wringer. They ask questions that you don't want to hear to make sure whatever's developed in this city gets put up correctly and all the laws are obeyed. That's what I like about that. And that also was not put in the packet, that if this, that an entrepreneur should go to the planning commission with his business and they could get the firsthand how to sort everything out because they're good at what they do. I've been there for many years watching them. They should get a chance to give their opinion, then give it back to the staff to give it back to you five. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Louise, Roy, and Tyrone.
Wow, I think that could be amended if we need that in there. I agree with Rafael as far as landlords and some of this stuff. But as far as the tax revenue and bringing it to our city, I mean, wow. If the state comes in, they're going to say what they want. At least we can call the shots. We could say we only want fifteen in our city or ten. They could say, oh, well, you know, it's like the wild west, you could have thirty. You could have them right across the street from the schools. Hey, we want them a thousand feet away from the schools. Hey, we could have them right across the street from a church like Rafael always say. Oh, now we got to say they got to be two thousand feet away from a church. Oh, we could have one set up at the mall. Oh, no, no, you can't do it there. There's children's families, there's restaurants. When you come in and you make the rules, you mandate it, you call the shots. If the state comes in, oh, wow, it's here alive and well. And I'm a few, some of the speakers, they, in the nineteen sixty, they were sure smoking in a token and now they don't want it. But, you know, you got to think about it. In our schools, it's running rampant. I know these two high school students from Value View here. In our schools, it's running rampant. I know these two high school students from Valley View here. I got my grandson here and his friend from Valley View also. They're smoking that all day long in our schools, along with everything else. Where have you people been? The ones that are so concerned about our kids and our students? Get involved in the schools and see what's going on, see what's really going on in our schools. There's liquor, there's Xanax, there's pills, there's weed, and it's all laced up. It's all laced up weed. And this is going to be for adults twenty-one years old. Our kids aren't going to be able to get their hands on it? They're not going to be able to go and buy it? Come on, let's be real, you know? So, you know, I think it's a good idea that we do have control of it. We got control of it. Well, let's just stop, cut all the liquor stores up. You know, let's just do away with them because, you know, people all day long drink, people all day long. I know you like your little Scotch once in a while, council member Gaiva. But are we gonna, are we going to stop and, and say, let's do away with liquor stores? No, we, we have a control over it. We have DUI checkpoints. We try to do our best that we can. We educate the community, our kids, you know? And that's what they should do. With some of this money we might get, let's take it into the schools and educate our kids, teach our kids what all the effects and what all the side effects of all this kind of stuff that's going on in our schools. It's alive and well, it's in our schools. It's sad. But nobody, they're all talking about our kids, all our kids, well, get busy. Get in the schools, get involved with the kids and see what's really going on in our schools. It's running rampant in our schools. They're getting high all day long in our schools. It's sad, but it's true. Wake up, Moreno Valley. So, I'm for it to be mandated, to be controlled by the, by the council here. So, they can't just do whatever they want like the wild, wild west way back in the day. Like I said, it's only twenty-one-year-old people that can go over there and buy it, I'm pretty sure. We got them right now, I mean, come on, for people with sick or whatever's going on. And like Rafael said, hey, we don't want blackout windows. We want to see who's going in and out of that place. And we want it far from our school, far from our churches, far from our mar, our, our malls, our malls.
Thank you Louise, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Louise is a tough act to follow. I'll try my best. Roy Blucker speaking on behalf of myself. And I would like to especially emphasize the commercial cultivation. Because that's where the real money is at. It's where the real jobs and the real opportunity are at in this industry, the growth industry that is going to be in the next century and now. We should take advantage of it. Desert Hot Springs and Adelanto, two very depressed communities have taken advantage of that segment of the market. And their real estate properties are rising. They're having more opportunity and the people are loving it. So, again, we should really be looking for the opportunities we should, we can grab a hold of and we can take and take advantage of. Instead of working on choo-choo trains and far-off opportunities that we probably won't have. But if you are, if you really want to attract the attention of Mr. Bezos, show him that you can put opportunity in Moreno Valley. Show them that you have a council and that you have a community that can actually get something done and put opportunity to send, not put things on paper or promises. Business does not run on promises, they run on performance. That's the bottom line in this. And we need to look at that. We need to elevate this community because lord knows, we've dozed under and thrown away many opportunities to make this community great. But this is one we can grab onto, so let's not lose this one opportunity. Want to take a, a little bit to run on the public out, the public safety aspect. This will put jobs, real jobs, entry-level jobs, which we do need. We need the revenue for the public safety so they can bust the illegal activities, the honey labs and everything else that we know that's going to go on. There's fifty-five thousand homes in Moreno Valley. They can grow six plants apiece. That's three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty, yes, thousand potential plants that could be grown here that you could not do nothing about because that's state law. So, let's regulate it. Let's regulate it on the retail side. Let's encourage it on the commercial side. Let's look at our regulations fees and everything to make this city the place where you have opportunity. Where you have jobs, where you can create a business. And let's look at the realistic. Let's be honest about what we can do, what we can grab at this point in time. The other industries are going away for regulation. This is one we can grab onto. We grab the bull by the horns, show people we are, and you will watch, you will attract more businesses, more opportunity coming in because, bottom line, it's about performance.
Thank you, Roy. Next speaker is Tyrone, followed by Patsy Brown and Laura.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me here. Well, I'm for it. And I was here last time. My background again is retired NFL, retired correction officer, and now own a security company. A lot of people have spoken about Washington and Denver. If you look at the crime rate of Denver and Washington, if you look at it one direction, crime is going to go up. You go year to year. In Washington alone, I have a few friends that's in law enforcement. It hasn't gone up because of, of medical marijuana. They do have new crimes toward medical marijuana, trying to break in and rob the stores. But that's any bad person, period. They see opportunity, they're going to try to do it. With the right regulation, which you guys input, each dispensary having proper security and also being protective and also underage can't go in liquor store, in a, in a dispensary. That's the type of rules that, you know, we need. Medical marijuana helps elderly, helps artistic, special need kids with different problems. It also helps community with jobs and also funding where we need law enforcement, fire department, or any other type of organization. We can't make everybody a hundred percent happy, but we can spread it out and help each organization with this. By taxing it and putting the right laws, being a team. And being on the team, football or corrections, my security team, everybody's not go home and call another person and be happy. But as long as we put everything together and spread it out, I think the community is going to benefit from it. That's basically my opinion for everything, and I hope you do, you do pass it. And you guys seem like you're, you know, work together great, you know, no matter what, the fight and whatever. So, I hope you guys vote yes for it, for the city of Moreno Valley. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tyrone. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
I am not for this, the legalization of marijuana. I want to ask you a few questions. Those that are for marijuana, outside of those that are for medical reasons, this conversation sounds the same as if, as if they were drug dealers. And I would hate to see Moreno Valley become a legal drug dealer. And that's exactly what it is. I am a Christian, I am a pastor, but prior to that, I was a weed smoker. I smoked weed for ten years. I smoked every kind of weed that they had. I know the effects of weed. I know the mind-altering properties of weed. I know it very well. I was involved in illegal weed activity. So, it's not just a pie in the sky that I'm standing up here talking about marijuana. We have young gangs, they hang out at the Marcinetta Park. They buy marijuana, contrary to what you've heard, I've seen this with my own eyes. Where our church was, we prayed out one marijuana clinic. I saw prostitution in there. I saw other drugs. I saw people snorting cocaine. We called the police. It was just a round, around-the-clock problem. They smoked on the outside of the building. They smoked in cars. The people, it was just a mess. So, all this pie in the sky conversation is for people that have their own agenda. We do not need that in our city. Why do we need to choose marijuana to be our ticket to success? And all of us here want our children to grow up healthy. I also have a doctorate degree in education as well as a PhD in Biblical studies. I could talk to you about the brain damage that happens to young children who young parents smoked marijuana constantly in the home. It's just the same as nicotine. And because they lace this medical marijuana with other chemicals, it does more damage than the nicotine. So, what we're saying is, we don't care if the, if the young kid's brain is damaged. As long as we can make a buck in marijuana, in Moreno Valley, then that's what we're going to do. Because we have no other, no other way to make money except for to legalize these clinics. They are a disaster. I don't think we could regulate it. I implore you, when you go home tonight, to think about your, I have eight grandchildren in this city. I don't want none of them on marijuana, and I'm sure you don't want your children on marijuana. So, I'm imploring you, when you go home, pray tonight, ask your God, whoever it is, if that's the decision that you need to make.
Next speaker, please. We have Laura, followed by Abel and Eddie.
Good evening. My name is Laura Santos. I'm with Professional Organic Solutions. We've had the pleasure of working with many municipalities to help them tailor and adopt an ordinance that suits their community. I have a brochure to share with you. And inside, we're, we're very proud of our list of experts that, on our team. We have environmental engineers, attorneys, CPAs that'll calculate your cost recovery, bilingual community outreach experts, which is really critical. One city recently did a really good job, notified all the churches, all the schools, brought outreach to businesses and residents, and, you know, things went very smoothly with adopting the ordinances. A couple of others didn't and has, have had a lot of setbacks. I, I just wanted to mention, you know, and it's critical to select the right business people because you don't want head shops or, you know, you want, you know, good businesses in your community. We also have law enforcement experts that know how to put together a security plan and compliance experts. So, I wanted to mention, it's a felony, the state law makes it a felony to supply to minors. It requires tracking from seed to sale, which makes it easier to find culprits. Regarding the federal prohibition, there are also federal safeguards. You have the coal memo, which is still in effect. The Roenbacher prohibition against using federal funds for enforcement. And there's even a bipartisan cannabis caucus in Congress right now. You know, both Republicans and, and Democrats that are trying to change the federal law. But we're here to help. If we can do anything to help Moreno Valley, we'd love to. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. We have Abel, followed by Eddie.
Thank you. Good evening, and again, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, board members, et cetera. Good evening. Thank you. My name's Abel Choppa. Real quick, like if I can, just a little quick bio. Ten years ago, I ran a collective, we're not a dispensary, there's no such thing as a dispensary unless you're a pharmacy. So, we need to change terminology and get that understood. These are not dispensaries. We're trying to put together, they're collectives. A dispensary denotes a pharmacy, and you have to be licensed in the FDA. We're not there yet. But let's get back to regulating and who I am that way. About ten years ago, I had a collective with close to sixty-two thousand, or sixty-two hundred members in the Chino area. We were only closed down because our rent went out. We got evicted. They put, the law put pressure on our landlord to evict us. We were following all the laws by Proposition 420 and, and, or SB 420 and Prop 15, which means we can be a collective. It's been legal since nineteen ninety-five, folks. We've been legal. And it's legal now throughout the state. But one thing I want to bring to mind is that we've been fighting a war on drugs for close to fifty years. Fifty years, and we haven't done anything. You'd think we as Americans would have won the war by now. On the contrary, it's costing us, over these fifty years, close to one and a half trillion, trillion dollars. It's costing us annually fifty-one billion dollars a year to fight this war on drugs that we haven't even come close to winning. Forget even winning a battle. We have a drug problem in this country, a big drug problem. Overdose, death from, from drug overdose. Mind you, there's not been one death reported from the use of marijuana, ever, ever. Maybe associated with, with alcohol and accident, car accident. There are more accidents with teenagers in alcohol than pot. That's fact. That's stats. And if you want stats, I got fifty years of stats. The billions of dollars, the hundreds of thousands of people incarcerated. We keep building jails for non-violent offenders instead of educating ourselves. We're imprisoning ourselves. And that's what we're doing when we sit on this decision for another year. Come on, you're intelligent people. What do you have to think about? There's money to be made. There's lives to be saved. I, myself, a Vietnam vet, I suffer PTSD. I can't sleep at nights. I see dead bodies all the time.
Thank you, sir.
It's marijuana, cannabis, it helps me sleep at night.
Thank you. Followed by Eddie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Eddie.
I'm Professor Eddie Funkstra from San Diego State University. I spoke to you guys a few weeks ago. I was brought by Richard Polanco and their group of, I don't know, really, they're visionaries. So, I'm here to just speak a couple of things. I was in Colorado. I was in Washington State setting up medical cannabis laws to recreational laws. I've also grown in Amsterdam, the Netherlands, Switzerland, and South America. So, just a brief background of, for the public to know where I speak from. People consider me an expert. I've just done it for many years. So, I do believe that we need to come as, as an aspect of education. The public seems very scared and fear-mongering seems to be running more of the gauntlet than actual education and, and, you know, preservance, perseverance of, of the brain. I mean, we're, we're pretty intelligent people by the nation standards, you know, we were United States of America. We're a city, a part of it. We're, this isn't, you, we're, we're being treated like second-rate citizens in a third-world country. We're asking as adults to have the rights to consume a product like alcohol and to be regulated in those manners. And for the law enforcement to educate themselves in this manner like they did in Australia, like they did in Washington. We did a study with the state of Washington for DUIs. These are the things, these studies aren't, don't have to be figured out. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. These things have been already rotating in the country. We can benefit, the city, the city does benefit. The children do, excuse me, do not get in contact of a lot of these products. Of course, things get handled over. My, my children are in school and they get pills handed over from children that take them from their parents' medicine cabinets. It's education. The parents should be held accountable. If more parents were held accountable, maybe the education of their children would further into the steps of our society. And instead, we just want to ridicule more adults instead of educating us. And the police department is a very beautiful force that we can use to educate them. And instead of them having to battle and lose money, they can actually be gained by more money. In Washington and Colorado, we paid for more fire departments, police departments, this is enforcement vehicles, other stuff like that. The stats of negative that's been happening that they use against for the fear-mongering definitely outweighs what we've done positively, which can be found easily on Google. So, the stats that they run, of course, when you want to run for fear-mong, a fear-mongering and the chariot, that's all you're going to run with it. But what this, the cities have definitely benefited many from this. My research that I teach at San Diego State University is medical research, clinical proposition 215 for AIDS, cancer patients, fibromyalgia, the Crohn's disease. These are real ailments that our community suffers from. And so, these things do benefit. These are in our own homes and other things like that. So, this is very well-needed in our community, and we're all adults. Let's regulate it like them. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Professor Eddie. Okay, all right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the business items. We have two business items. We're going to go ahead and hear the presentations from the two items first. And then we'll do council questions of, for both items, and then we'll do a deliberation as well after that too. So, there'll be several, two rounds to do that. So, we'll go ahead and start with staff. City Attorney for A1, which is, or N- City Attorney for A1, which is ordinance adding Chapter 5.05 Commercial Cannabis Activity Permitting Process. Go ahead and do the staff report, and then we'll move on to A2, which is your same staff report. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of the council, two weeks ago, we were given direction to provide you with a ordinance, ready for introduction, that would take care of the, one of the two prongs of regulatory aspect of commercial cannabis in the city. What you have before you is an ordinance that if, and when adopted, would install Chapter 5.05 into our code, and would provide a comprehensive regulatory scheme for controlling and regulating and permitting commercial cannabis activity in the city. The second prong of that, which would be the land use entitlements, would be some of the portions of the regulations that are not in this ordinance, as mentioned by the speakers, distance from sensitive receptors, regulations about setbacks, locations in the city, et cetera. All of that would go into the land use ordinance that would go before the Planning Commission and be brought to you when that was concluded. These regulations deal with the process of applying for a permit, and the ordinance, as you, as you saw, has, takes it from basically filing of the application all the way through the issuance of the business permit, and then ongoing monitoring and compliance, which is on an annual basis. The permit would be reissued annually. It does cover all of the aspects of commercial cannabis consistent with the direction, which is dispensary cultivation, labs and manufacturing, testing and manufacturing. It provides for a application process, provides for an appeal to the council on any decisions made at staff level by the city manager or her designee. It does provide for additional regulations and some more detailed policies to be installed, either by council resolution or by policies set by staff as the process moves forward. Again, this, this one is before you, there is much time left before both of them are in place, and only at that time can we actually start accepting applications and issuing entitlements. And in the meantime, if, as we're going through the process of the land use regulations, if there are things that appear in the ordinance that need to be either adjusted or need to be fixed by policy, there's plenty of time to take care of that. Also, the other aspect of this, which will need to be acted on by the council, is installation of fees. And again, I will state that the fees are simply a reimbursement for the costs that the businesses and processing, monitoring, controlling, and issuing permits, the cost the city incurs in that process can be and should be recovered from the applicants, and that's the fee schedule. We are working with a consultant, who is the top consultant in California on these issues, and we most likely will be retaining their services. They already serve over a hundred cities in the state with both the fee issues, the regulatory aspects, as well as the third prong of this, which I'll come to in a minute, and that is taxation. So again, you will, you can expect that a, that a master fee schedule amendment at some point in time, if we move forward with this, will be coming before you to adopt fees, which will be charged by the city in the process of processing these applications and issuing With regard to the third prong, and that is taxation, some people have mentioned that, speaking to you. If the council desires to move forward with setting regulations and basically allowing the commercial cannabis activity in the city and regulating it, staff recommends that we are directed to bring back to you a ordinance, which would be a ballot measure, which would propose to the voters a tax on the commercial cannabis activity, and that tax would, could be taken to the voters in November of 2018 in the general election. We have some materials before you with regard to the success and the amounts of some of the other jurisdictions. With the exception of one, in 2016, all of the cities have adopted, cities and counties have adopted taxes on commercial cannabis use. So that would be part of the other recommendation that staff has for you. If you have any questions on any of the aspects of the ordinance, please let me know, but other than that, with that, I'll submit my report.
Okay, is that A2 as well?
No, no. We'll move to A2.
Okay, go ahead and move to A2.
Thank you, Mayor. A2 is simply a step that needs to be taken by the council to extend the existing ban. As you may recall, a ban on both commercial and medical cannabis activity has been adopted by the council right, right before the election of 2016. The ban has been extended. Seat for District Four needed to be filled, time needed to be had for the council and for staff to prepare and give you time to make a decision whether or not you want to regulate it, and if you do want to regulate it, to, to install the regulations that would be acceptable, acceptable to the council. So Item Two is an extension of the ban, and the ban can be extended for one year, and that would be to October 31st of 2018. And the ban would be terminated by adoption, if the council moves forward with adoption, by adoption of the regulatory ordinance as well as the land use regulation. So when both of those two prongs would be in place, the ban would obviously discontinue. And that, at that point in time, lawful commercial cannabis activity would be allowed in the city under the regulations that would be installed at that time. So we request on the Item A2 that council adopt a resolution which would extend the ban till October 31st of next year, or until both regulations are in place, whichever comes sooner. With regard to the first one, there are several recommendations. The first one, which is the one pertaining to the tax measure, to direct staff to, to move forward with the ballot measure, if the council desires to move forward with the regulations. If the ordinance as presented is acceptable to the council, we would recommend a first reading by title only, introduction, and then setting the second reading for the next meeting. Any alternative, if there are areas of the ordinance that you wish that staff consider and revise, give us that direction, and we'll come back to you for, for another first reading at next meeting. With that, I'll submit.
Thank you, City Attorney. We'll go ahead and do our, now that we've listened to both staff reports, we'll go ahead and do our council questions, one round for both items. I'm gonna go ahead and just start. As far as the tax rate for, let's say, for example, the proposed ballot measure, how would that be set? The proposed tax rate? Would that be like a committee within the, the city? Would it, would it be that you're, you'll survey other cities to see what other cities are doing, and then just come up with a number?
I think that what I would propose, if we're directed in that direction, that...
And I know you need more time to process it.
Well, yeah. We have time on that one. But I think that we will be working with experts who have done this in a number of areas, others, other areas of the state and other cities and counties. We'll also be working with, obviously, staff and looking at the local taxes, so the rates are not such that they would create a issue with competition, for example. Approaches can be either a flat rate. In other words, you simply charge a flat amount of tax per year for a particular business or part of a particular business, or you do it on a percentage basis of gross profit. So there are a couple of approaches. We would outline the benefits and the downsides of each of them, and, and bring you our recommendation if we're directed to do that at some time in the future. And at that point in time, you would have the opportunity to make a decision on which way you want to proceed.
My other question is, what would be like a cost estimate of, of the ballot measure? Would you say like a range?
A ballot measure...
If it's in the November election, would it be a lot cheaper?
In a, in a general election, it's a consolidated election. I frankly will defer to either the city clerk or the city manager. My recollection's in the thirty thousand range for the whole city.
In the 2018 election, it would run with the seats that are up as well. So the last election that was for the mayor's election, it was, I want to say, two hundred thousand. But that included your seat.
But...
The only cost would be for the additional ballot. I mean, the, the city would be already incurring the cost of, of the regular election, but there would be an additional...
Twenty or thirty? Right, something like that?
We can have a number for you at, at next meeting.
Instead of just throwing a giddy one.
We still haven't received the number from the special election.
Okay. And then my other question has to do, you know, there was a comment made from someone in the public that mentioned that, you know, that this needs to go to Planning Commission, you know, as far as when, you know, as far as where, I forgot exactly what they said, but in your recommended ordinance that's here tonight, you are recommending that as far as the land use decisions, as, you know, you know, where, and those kinds of things that they'd be reviewed through the Planning Commission. Is that not correct?
That is absolutely correct, Mayor. The, the second prong of this process, which is just as important, if not more important, is, is the land use entitlement. In other words, where can they locate, how close to each other, how far away from sensitive receptors, what are the development standards, and et cetera? All, what are the environmental implications for cultivation, for water usage, for electricity? All of that would be evaluated through the Planning Department, taken to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would give you a recommendation for your consideration.
Thank you. And then also, as, in your opinion, you know, obviously as city attorney, what do you have to say in regards to, you know, some residents are saying that, you know, now students or kids will be able to use the weed or, or smoke pot. Does this ordinance allow that?
No, neither the state law nor the ordinance obviously allows sale or, or making available commercial cannabis to minors. You have to be twenty-one years of age to either work there. It, it'll be illegal, and, and it will give one other method by which to, to regulate it.
And, and I believe state law, like you mentioned, has that rule, as well as six hundred feet from schools as well. So state law has that already, six hundred feet from schools. Is that correct?
Retail establishments of cannabis under state law have to be six hundred feet away from schools. That is correct.
My other question is, can you just outline, just very briefly, the process of adopting an ordinance? Like, for example, tonight is a first reading, so...
An ordinance is adopted in two steps. The first step is an introduction, a reading by title only, and then scheduling a second reading at the next meeting, or any other meeting that follows, that's up to the city council. But, but it is definitely a two-step process at minimum. You have to introduce the ordinance, conduct the first reading by title only, schedule the second reading for another council meeting. You can adopt it at the next council meeting. Thirty days after the adoption, the ordinance becomes effective. Fifteen days after the adoption, you have to post a summary of the ordinance.
Okay. And then my other question has to do with the person that will actually be approving or not approving the applications, you know, if this ordinance is, is passed. I know in the ordinance, when I was reading it, it kept saying, you know, city manager or designee. Would that mostly be the planning director? Or would it be the building official?
The...
That would actually see the applications and weigh it?
For the regulatory permit, the business permit, there's a couple of options that are left for the city. We can contract that out, actually, to a, to a concern, which would prepare everything and then bring everything ready to the city manager or her designee for, for a decision on the permit. The decision would be made basically by city manager or, or somebody who she designates on the land use side, the conditional use permit, et cetera. That process goes through the Planning Commission and, obviously, through the Planning Department.
So the planning director would, after that?
Well, yes. I mean, the, the process of issuing and monitoring, but the, the conditional use permit is approved by an action of the Planning Commission.
And then, even if we were to adopt this ordinance at any time, I mean, can we make amendments to the ordinance? You know, make it maybe, obviously, it looks very, to be honest, I was reading through it, I mean, it's very detailed, which is great, because that, that, you know, I think, you know, as a city, you know, we want strict rules, you know, to regulate this. At any time, this can be changed?
It can be changed by the same process, the two-step process. Yes.
Okay. And then, have you already retained the consultant?
We have a consultant under contract for the preliminary part of, of this, of this process.
And who, who's the consultant?
HDL.
Okay.
HDI?
HDL. HDL?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And, okay, so I will defer to Mayor Protambaka for council questions, and please keep it to council questions, so that way we can do another round of just only deliberations.
All righty. I want all the questions that were, and comments and critiques that came from the podium to be addressed. So I know that even liquor stores, even liquor stores, you can't buy a beer or a bottle of booze and sit outside and, you know, drink it in your car or in front. Would that be the same for, let's say, dispensaries?
That is correct. You cannot consume or, or loiter in front.
At liquor stores, for example, they cannot sell to minors, correct? They must be twenty-one or over.
That is correct.
So the cannabis stores would be the same.
That is correct.
Yes, okay. I, I also heard that there's a lot of chemicals, or that marijuana is laced. The industry will have testing as well. Is that correct? So the, the product will be, will go through our testing and...
State law covers very strict testing protocols for the commercially distributed cannabis, along with labeling and tracking devices.
Right. So it would be safer, a safer or cleaner product that would be sold in the dispensaries? Is that correct? If it has to go through the testing?
Well, yes. If it has to go through the testing, it would be tested, yes.
And what about the distance between schools, churches, and, for example, let's say that there's a, a dispensary, I'm sorry, couldn't find the word, a dispensary in a shopping center already, would a charter school be able, or another school, a private school, be able to open up within that same center? Pre-existing store?
Yeah. Well, if, if, if a store was established legally...
Yes, of course.
And operating legally, then the use would not be allowed within six hundred feet of that store. So if their school came to establish...
Afterwards.
Afterwards, they would not be permitted.
Okay. You know, I have a question on the ban. What, if we would like to be legal by January 1st, the date that the state will be issuing tickets or applications, what have you, what's the process for Moreno Valley businesses to obtain a license or permit to operate within the city limits?
Well, the, the process to operate within city limits is outlined in this ordinance, but this ordinance would not allow anybody to be in business by January 1st. We, we don't have a mechanism by which we could do that.
And what is a mechanism, and why don't we have it?
Well, the mechanism is that both this ordinance and the land use ordinance needs to be in place before anybody can be issued either a business permit or a land use entitlement, presumably a conditional use permit.
And do we have a timeline for the land use permits?
I will defer to planning staff on that. I will defer to planning staff on that.
We're going to have media put up a quick PowerPoint presentation for you on that subject.
Thank you.
There it is. I'll see if I can get media to clip the pages for me. Yeah. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members.
Start over.
Yeah, we'll start from the beginning here again. This is just a few slides here to describe some timeframes for you on the land use portion of the two-pronged effort that city attorney has mentioned earlier. You know, and as with all council items, we want to present a very thorough and thoughtful presentation for you with whatever that item may be, so that you can have the best information and make the best decision. So, this is a presentation that, excuse me, a presentation that's kind of broken or divided up into two halves for you. On the left side, this shows recommendations, and then on the right side is a potential accelerated timeframe that can be done for the necessary steps to bring this other half of the ordinance package for you with respect to land use requirements. So, as you can see, we've already really defined the project. That part's complete. We understand what the council is looking for, which is all facets of this topic. The process, we've somewhat defined that. Martin has alluded to it also with respect to the entitlement actions, specifically stating a conditional use permit, and we would estimate that timeframe to be about a month for that. That just is for us to take a look at the land uses, what we're going to require within this approval process for your consideration when it goes through the Planning Commission. Then we'll, of course, prepare the ordinance. This would be an amendment to Title IX. We're talking about the permitted uses table. We're looking at zoning. We're looking at those specific items, like setbacks that was mentioned by the public tonight. We figure that we would also have the opportunity to utilize existing ordinances to help us in this matter, also with the consultant that would be able to possibly participate in this measure, excuse me, in this process for us. And we would estimate that that timeframe would be about a month there. So, we're looking at up to two months at this point. Because it's a process that goes through Title IX, we have to look at any environmental effects. We have a choice here. We either go through a, what we'll call a full environmental review process, which talks about, well, which would require us to go through analysis, a preparation, a public review period that would be typically done, along with a challenge period, versus utilizing, we have the option, and the city attorney can maybe chime in a little bit on this too. We do have the opportunity to piggyback on the state EIR that may save us some time, would reduce that overall environmental review time. Public outreach, that's completely up to the council. If you want to involve stakeholders, public, we've heard some of that tonight. We just came up with a month for that. If you wanted to have maybe two options or two meetings, maybe one during the evening and one on a weekend, as an example, totally up to council, or not have any meetings like that. Lastly, public hearings. This is a given because we have to go before the Planning Commission with this amendment and to the city council ultimately. And we've plugged in two months for that process. That's getting it on the schedule. Public hearing, there's noticing, and then we have to do the same thing, again, for the council as we move this package forward. So, essentially, we're coming down to, give or take, about nine months for the long, longer version, or probably about five months for the shorter. That nine months, you know, there may be some opportunity there for us to whittle that down just a little bit more, to tighten it up. If things go quickly, smoothly, both processes could be quicker.
How would this ordinance affect the existing dispensaries?
Neither of these ordinances changes the status of the existing dispensaries. They are operating illegally and will continue to move all efforts we can to shut them down.
Okay, and will they be able to apply once we have an ordinance?
Yes, they will be able to apply.
Now, once we're legal and we have licenses and permits and the state is working with the city, et cetera, the voters have approved the tax and all that, what are we going to do about any illegal dispensaries popping up?
We're going to do the same thing that we're continuing to do, and that is, we're going to be enforcing the code and enforcing the regulations that we have and shutting them down. We're actively in a process of reviewing our processes, and we just had a couple of successes, and things are moving forward on that front very well from our office, as far as, and code enforcement, staff from the Planning Department with their assistance. We're having good successes in shutting the places down.
Another question is, currently, with the ban, how long does it take from the time that the city is aware that an illegal dispensary is operating until you shut them down? What's the amount of time that it takes, generally?
I think that we've had some that we were able to put out of business in a period of a few weeks, and there are some that we're still in court with and who are still operating six months later. So, anything in between there is a timeframe.
Mayor, I think that's all the questions I have at the time.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tembaka. We have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you.
With council questions.
My first question actually was very identical to Mayor Pro Tem's last question, regarding closing illegal dispensaries. I do want to mention that I noticed the illegal dispensary operating over off of Postal Avenue is now closed, thanks to our city attorney department. In addition, most of that was already asked, but I have two other questions. One was brought up by a member in the public. Seeing as these dispensaries can only operate in cash, how would the city go about reimbursing ourselves for the costs that we are going to incur?
The costs that we're going to incur will be contained in the application fee and the processing fees that will be charged to the applicant. And payment will be received and deposited in our accounts.
There shouldn't be any issues there, getting all-
I'm not aware of any issue that would arise there.
Thank you, and my last question is regarding requirements or any kind of rules or regulations that we can impose on landlords. I actually asked about this before, and so what can we do? I didn't see that anywhere in this ordinance, but what can we do in terms of, and I've stated this before, putting some kind of regulations where we can shut off utilities or anything like that for illegal dispensaries that are either operating now or in the future?
Any illegal use on any property is ultimately the responsibility of the property owner, and that provision is already contained in our municipal code. So, in our efforts to shut down the illegal dispensaries currently, we also involve, either by cooperation or by legal action, the property owners of those properties, landlords. We intend to continue to do the same. To the extent that there are expedited methods available to close any of these places down, we will avail ourselves of that and obviously use them if they're available.
So, we do have that option as of now?
Yes, that is correct. We hold landlords responsible, property owners responsible.
Thank you, and that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have Councilmember Geiba.
Thank you, I think my little button has the spirit of LaDonna. It doesn't go on. It's a joke we have here. So, I have a series of questions and I hope I can get these all right. One of the, one of the members out there referenced that after January first, the state comes in and they'll tell us what we want, what we're going to do. Could you explain the accuracy of that statement?
I think what the speaker was referencing is that if a city does not have regulation in place, technically speaking, the state law would be applicable. The state law basically would apply in the city. City of Moreno Valley does have a regulation in place, and that regulation is a complete ban. And assuming affirmative action of the council tonight on our request to extend that ban, we will continue to have that regulation into the next year.
So, then, that comment really isn't accurate because currently, we have a ban in place, and we can extend that ban for another year. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that in case the public didn't quite understand that. Okay, this is kind of a question, I think, for the chief of police, if he doesn't mind. Joel, why would crime go up when it's regulated in the other states?
Why would crime go up?
Yeah, according to the PowerPoint and everything that the one student was referring to, crime continues to go up in the other states that have it regulated.
Well, if you're speaking specifically about the state of Colorado-
Use of marijuana in Colorado and Oregon, Washington.
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, I'm sorry.
In Colorado, and as I've explained to others, I have actually family members who live in Colorado, and we visit fairly frequently. I can tell you that use is up. It's, one thing you have to look at is, if you are honest with yourselves, the worst drug that we have in society today is alcohol. And why is it so bad? Because it's legally acceptable, it's very readily available, it's cheap. And I think in this city, there are something in excess of two hundred licenses for the sale of alcohol. So, it is a very dangerous drug. People don't look at alcohol as a drug because it's been in our society for so long. Part of the problem with alcohol is that we've taken the taboo away, and that's essentially what you're doing or what other states have done by legalizing marijuana and permitting it to be used for recreational purposes. So, it's important, I think, that we look at, we've heard people tonight talk about medical marijuana. That's a separate issue in and of itself. Now, we're also talking about Prop 64, which is legalizing marijuana for twenty-one-year-olds and above to use for recreational purposes. You have two different things. They're two distinctly different things. You've heard the term, I think the professor or somebody spoke about the term dispensary, and I think the statement was that you have to be licensed by the DEA and basically be a pharmacy to be considered a dispensary. So, not every place that sells marijuana is, in fact, a dispensary. Some of them are just retail outlets for marijuana, like a liquor store. A liquor store is not a pharmacy. It has a liquor license to sell liquor for use. So, why does crime go up? Well, the crimes that we've experienced in our city with the illegal medical retail, I'm sorry, retail locations for marijuana, which have all established illegally in the city to this point, we have had robberies, we have had shootings, we have had beatings, things of that nature, because marijuana is very valuable. It has a value on the street, and that value is much greater than some people may believe. So, there is that element. Somebody else, I think it was Mr. Wright, mentioned the cartel influence. The vast majority of the marijuana that comes into this country that's not grown here is coming in from drug cartels, drug trafficking organizations who are bringing it into this country to sell for a profit. And, you know, one thing that we've failed to discuss is the profit margin that these companies are hoping to realize. This is not just about compassionate use. This is about making a lot of money for the people who are going to be selling those drugs in the state. So, those are all considerations you have to think about. In my thirty-two years in law enforcement, I have seen people killed for less than $500 worth of marijuana because people want what somebody else has and they're willing to do things to take it. You can assign any label to that that you want, moral decay, whatever the case may be. The, when we take the taboo away from something that has been for many years and currently is at the federal level of crime, we begin to let people know, including our children, that, well, it's acceptable, it's socially acceptable. If you allow your children to drink alcohol at home, is it okay for them to go and drink alcohol when they're out and about if they're under twenty-one? I don't allow my kids to do that. It makes them very angry because they think that they should be able to do that. I tell them, you can't drink until you're twenty-one. That's the law. Can't do that in my house either. So, that's my responsibility to try to teach my kids that. Is alcohol available to kids? Absolutely. Is marijuana available to kids? Of course. It's available to everybody. It's out there, and they're absolutely right. The people who said it's here, that's true. But we don't have to necessarily participate in purveying marijuana to the public if we don't choose to. So, the answer to your question is very complex. Why do people commit crimes? Why does crime increase? I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we removed the taboo from the substance. And as I said, we're talking about two different things, medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, two totally different topics.
And we currently have medical marijuana as approved since, what'd you say, nineteen ninety-five or something like that? So, for medical uses, those proper or places are still available to people who need it for medical needs and stuff.
As we heard from one of the speakers tonight.
One other quick question on that topic. It's been said many times that we've got laws in place, kids under twenty-one are not allowed to purchase alcohol and get alcohol. Does that stop them from getting the alcohol? And do you have any kind of minimal statistics about how many kids are able to get that? Because I heard one person say, all this stuff's in the schools. You can get these pills, you can get all this stuff, and marijuana, and alcohol. And yet, by regulating it, are we really stopping them from getting it? I'm asking the chief, yeah, because he's got that kind of knowledge in his head, I think.
Well, no, and we do projects, we do operations with the alcohol, the state Board of Alcohol Beverage Control all the time. They actually provide us with grant funding to do these shoulder tap operations where we take minors who are vetted volunteers for us, and we go out and we do, we attempt to buy alcohol from businesses who are licensed to sell alcohol. And typically speaking, we get a, you know, two, three, four a night that will sell to a minor. We also find people that, and this is probably the bigger problem, find people who will go in and buy the alcohol and turn it over to the minor, and knowing that the minor cannot legally purchase alcohol. So, to say that regulating marijuana is going to keep it out of the hands of children is just disingenuous. It's not going to. It doesn't now. It doesn't keep alcohol out of their hands. It's certainly not going to keep marijuana out of their hands.
Yeah, I used to work, I was a Friday Night Live counselor, and Friday Night Live did those taps with you folks, and I was very much involved in that. Thank you very much, Joel. Chief, I had a question for you. For land use privileges, you know, land use purposes, what would be our fire safety concerns with legalizing all aspects of the use of marijuana?
I have Adrienne Reinsen, our fire marshal, here. She's probably best to answer that question.
Thank you.
Have her come up.
Adrian, thank you.
To answer that question, the land use, that's certainly something that fire is interested in. I think a lot of that has been discussed so far with- I think a lot of that has been discussed so far with where we put the different types, whether it's cultivation or the dispensaries or the manufacturing. You have some hazardous materials that are involved in there that we want away from more protected uses and that sort of thing. All of that will be very actively involved in when we get to that zoning piece of the puzzle if we do in fact go down this road. But our concerns are certainly with too close to the schools, too close to neighborhoods, exposure to hazardous materials, that sort of thing.
Thank you, I just wanted to kind of fill in that gap from my part versus because I didn't have the information. Thank you very much, Adrian. Another good question. If we keep the ban, if we keep the total ban on this, total ban and nothing more, can we still have town hall meetings and still solicit input from the residents and get a feeling for how the entire community feels about this issue? Or, no, just because we've done the ban, we can't talk about it with the residents, have town hall meetings, have more data and information presented?
One does not preclude the other. You can have the ban in place and continue the dialogue with the public on regulations or any other subject.
And there'd be no rush on that? Just until the ban expires or we have to renew the ban? Is there a number of times that you can renew the ban?
It would be my advice that the council adopt this one last time for one year for the full amount because our own code provides this is the last extension.
Okay, and after this last extension, we can make it a total ban or we cannot, or we can no longer ban it?
Prior to expiration of that and sufficient amount of time to adopt a permanent ordinance, if nothing else was happening, I would come before you and ask you the same question. Do you want to regulate it or you want to ban it? And if the answer was ban it, then we would install probably a revised more permanent ban.
Can the ban or regulation of this be changed by any other body of council in the future? I mean, can it be rescinded? Can it be taken away? Can it be re-put into place? And if it is, what would be the consequences for those that are already, let's say if you legalize it or already running legal operations, another council came in and said, "Hey, look, we want to just ban it." What's the consequences of that?
Any license that has been issued would continue to be valid for the year that it was issued. Any land use entitlement that was given would be if land use permits or land use entitlements would change, land use table would change uses. It would be illegal non-conforming use.
Okay, so another council could actually come in if they wanted to and, because we don't know what's going to happen next year in the elections and stuff. They could actually come in and say, "We're done with this."
I think that the question is more complicated than that because of the entitlements and the permitting process and the money that is being spent on it. But yes, next city council has the ability and the power to change the regulations.
So if the council changes, then the decisions could be changed either way. It doesn't matter, and I want to, that's what I mean. On your ordinance of 5.05, let me just refer to my note. Do any of these alternatives allow rejection of the ordinance outright until brought back at another meeting time? Or, once you approve ordinance 5.05, is that now the stepping stone for approving the use of marijuana? And then the only other step is the second reading?
There's nothing for the council to approve today. What's before you today is an ordinance in draft form for introduction and first reading. If the council, as a majority, likes the ordinance, is satisfied with its content, then you can conduct the introduction, the first reading, set it for adoption for the next meeting or another meeting in the future of the city council. Once that is conducted, 30 days later, the ordinance becomes effective, but it's until land use entitlement is in place, the ordinance just sits there because there is nothing to be done with it.
Can the council, this evening, completely reject this ordinance in its entirety and say, "We'll bring it back at another time, but we don't want this ordinance, even on a first or second reading, any of it? Just let's go away." Can you do that?
Council is free to do as they wish.
Well, I just didn't see that kind of an alternative put on the page. So, I wanted to know if in fact, through the conversation of the people, our own dialogue and discussion, we decide that it's probably not wise at this time to go forward with that, can we say, "Reject this ordinance completely"?
Sure, and the reason that the alternative was not listed, Councilmember Gaiba, is because the council, by majority, directed staff to prepare this and bring it forward for adoption.
Thank you, that's what I want to hear.
You're welcome.
All right, and then, I think I pretty well beat this horse up a little bit. But tonight, if we redo the ordinance to extend it, that would be for a year's timeframe and according to the PowerPoint from planning, you could, we could be moving forward for this, if it got approved, to within five to nine months. Am I correct, Alan?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
We have Councilmember Marquez for council questions. And then, right after this, we'll take a break.
Wow, I don't have no questions after all these discussions and questions, wow. What this consultant firm, D HDL, you said they had worked with other cities to form or to bring up an ordinance that's...
They're currently working with 100 cities in California on both regulations and taxation scheme for commercial cannabis. They're a combination of regulatory and financial consultants. I have worked with them in my, two of my prior three jurisdictions in the same capacity.
What have they said about taxes from sale of marijuana? What have they said about taxes, collecting taxes, since it's against federal law? Who is, where are they depositing the money? I mean, this consultant firm, what are they saying about these dispensaries? Where are they just depositing their monies? If it can't be done through a bank or create a union, who's...
I did not ask the consultant where the dispensaries are depositing their money. If a tax is imposed, that tax needs to be paid to the city.
Well, how can you regulate your taxes if you don't know where you're depositing it?
Well, the city would deposit it in their own account, once it receives it.
On sales of marijuana? When this business goes, they get a business license to sell marijuana. Where are they going to deposit their monies?
I don't know the answer to that question, Councilmember.
It seems like we're talking about collecting taxes. Where are we going to get the taxes from? I mean, you can't deposit it in a federal institution. It's allowed by federal government. Create a union's the same way. We talk about revenues, revenues, revenues. How are we going to know, how are you going to know that we're getting our fair shake of the taxes from these dispensaries?
That I can answer for you. There are a couple of ways of handling that issue. One is by setting a flat tax. And that means, for example, if you want to tax dispensaries, each dispensary will pay the city $200,000 a year for the right to exist in the city. And we don't care how much profit they make or don't make. We don't go into their cash box to count their money. We get a quarterly check from them for a flat amount. You can set a tax at a, based on gross profit or receipts, in which case you do need to audit it. This firm is doing it. There are several cities in California that are already collecting taxes. So, the process is established. It's figured out. We're not going to be reinventing the wheel, whether we go with a flat tax or with a tax on gross profits.
The voters had voted on this, the California voters. It passed 52 to, I believe, 52 to 49. Do we know what the voters here in Moreno Valley, what the split was?
Yes, and that information was provided to the council. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was 65, 62, 38, I believe, 62 in favor.
I couldn't find it, couldn't locate it.
Okay, I'll resend it.
So, if we need to, if we want to bring this out to the voters again, we're wasting our time. Basically, we're wasting our time. If the residents of Moreno Valley already decided, "Yes, let's make it legal in Moreno Valley," what's the sense of going back and letting the voters vote again?
The vote would have nothing to do with whether it's legal or not. The vote would be whether or not to tax it. That would be what would be put before the voters. In other words, do you want to tax commercial cannabis businesses in Moreno Valley? And if they vote in favor of it, as 99% of the cities that had the ballot measure did, the revenue received from the taxes would go directly to the general fund and couldn't be used for any legal purpose in the general fund.
Would the voter set that? Will they set that percent sales tax or...
I think that the council sets the verbiage and the numbers that are in the ballot and puts the ballot, the ordinance on the ballot. So, that issue would come before you and be a decision made by the council as to how you want to tax it and what amount and whether it would be based on gross profits, whether it would be based on a flat annual tax.
Is medical marijuana, is it taxed the same way?
The difference that I'm aware of between the recreational or adult use marijuana and medical is that medical marijuana cannot be sales taxed. So, there's no sales tax collected on medical marijuana sale.
Jobs. If an employee from Moreno Valley, City of Moreno Valley, sends a, let's say this gets passed, an employee of City of Moreno Valley gets in an accident, let's say in a city vehicle, and we set him out to get drug tested, and he shows that he has marijuana in his system, but it's legal, what happens then? What could happen then?
The adoption or not adoption of this does not affect our personnel rules, which preclude being under the influence. And the state law specifically provides the employers the option with precluding their employees from being, from using or being under the influence while employed.
Basically like alcohol?
Correct.
So, we legalize marijuana usage and there's a company that's totally against, 100% against it. And he goes to work the next day and boss says, "You live in Moreno Valley, but you guys legalized the usage, but you know what? I'm going to send you for a test." And it comes back positive. You don't think unemployment is going to go up? You don't think it will? I mean, your opinion. Do you think that, that the unemployment rate will go up?
For the same reasons that I stated a minute ago is, I think that if people are inclined to do that right now, test their employees, they're doing it. So, whether City of Moreno Valley or any other city passes regulations for marijuana, I think the right of an employer to set regulations and rules for their employees and right to test them exists. So, I'm not sure that the world would be much different in that respect, in my opinion.
Okay, that's all I had. Pretty much all the other questions were answered already. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, City Attorney. We're going to go ahead and take a five to 10-minute break and then we'll be back. And then, we'll move to the deliberation part. Thank you, everyone, and welcome back to our meeting. We're going to go ahead and get started. So, we just finished the council questions. We did the round, we asked our questions. Now, we're going to do deliberations and there'll be just one round. So, if anyone wants to go ahead and provide their deliberation, once we do the one round, I will be closing in and asking for motions. And I'd rather just take it one at a time, so we'll do a motion for, you know, A1 and then see how that goes and then we'll go to A2. Okay, but for right now, it's deliberations. So, if any of the council members would like to make their comments, they can do so at this time. Okay, we have Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Well, first and foremost, I'm concerned with safety. And what I would like to see is a testing center in the City of Moreno Valley and I want everything to be tested. I want everything that's being sold in our city to be clean, safe, under the guidelines that the state has already imposed. And of course, you know, we don't want kids to have access, just like we don't want kids to have access to liquor. So, I think that we're on a good course. And as far as the ban, I need some more information because I heard the attorney, our attorney, mention that we cannot have another extension. And I need more information on that. And I was inclined to extend the ban until December 31st so that we can have something in place by January 1st. And my second consideration would be based on what planning presented tonight. So, that would be maybe for another five months.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, my concern is, I don't want to rush this. I don't think anybody really wants to rush this. What I'd like us to do tonight is put this on hold for more discussion, study session, and get more input from the residents. Even if we okay this tonight, it's, nothing's going to go into effect anyways. So, delaying it for a couple more council meetings or study sessions, I think it would give us more of a, where we stand, where the residents want in Moreno Valley. The other concern I have is these legal dispensaries that we have in the city. And this goes to the ban. A lot of businesses around these dispensaries are concerned. They're losing business. There was one on Hemlock and Ecock. We closed down. The banks in that area were really concerned about the armed guards walking around the facilities, intimidating their customers. They lost a lot of customers and a lot of these customers were elderly people coming in and they didn't want to come back to the bank. So, we need to keep these dispensaries controlled. If they're illegal, close them down. You don't need armed guards walking around the dispensaries. So, what I'd like to see is to put this on the back burner, wait for a couple more months till we get more input and then, as for the ban, keep it till another six months, six to nine months. Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you. I have a couple of things to say here. So, earlier today, someone brought up the black market, specifically the cartel. A little bit of background here, my direct ancestors are from Mexico. So, that's something that I am pretty passionate about because I've seen the effect that it's had on Mexico as a country as well as the spillover that it's caused here in the United States. So, my belief and the way I look at this is, if we do regulate it and we set an ordinance in place, we'll be able to hit them where they have power, which is the money. We're going to be able to hit the black market in their pockets. And as a result of that, we'll be able to see less power in that cartel. I actually talked to the district attorney. I believe his last name is Hestron. And he brought that up. He said that the county of Riverside is an active market for the cartel because it's so close to the border. And I told him how I feel about this topic and what we could do about that. So, I just wanted to say that regarding the black market and the cartel. Next, surrounding cities that have put ordinances in place. I believe these are mentioned in the staff report. Paris already has an ordinance in place. San Jacinto has an ordinance in place. San Jacinto has an ordinance in place. Coachella has an ordinance in place. And other cities, as was mentioned before, are looking at us to see what they're going to do in the very near future. Uh, we're the second largest city in Riverside, so I, I can see why they're waiting for us to take action on this. I used to live in Texas as well. In Texas, it's completely, completely banned. Everything is illegal, even medical. So even though that's a fact, I have seen people using it in Texas. It's still around, there is an active black market. Kids still get their hands on it. Everyone is able to get their hands on it, all they have to do is search. So that's what I have to say regarding, um, you know, a prohibition of it. In addition, I want to address some comments that were made by the chief, uh, in regards to prohibition. And, uh, I, 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 I agree that we've taken that taboo away when it comes to alcohol. But when we did have prohibition, what did we see back then in the early nineteen hundreds? That's when all the, the mafia came out. That's when all these gangsters started coming out, and there was a lot of crime happening back then, a lot of people dying. And so that's why Congress passed another amendment to overturn, I believe it was the eighteenth, to end prohibition because it did not work. So that's what I have to say about that. As far as taxes being a revenue source, I, I look at this as how, how can we balance this out? Because I don't want younger kids, I, I've seen what it does. I don't want the younger people or any people for that fact to, to be using this because I know what it does to them. The motivation that it takes away from people and I, I've seen it. I've seen it, I used to live in Compton as well. I've seen it with my own eyes, I've lived it. And, um, I think if, if we put a tax on the ballot for the people to vote on next year, which I hope, um, they would approve, we can get revenue out of it. Here in California, we're really struggling to find sources of revenue. Take, take into account our roads, our infrastructure. And with the recent, uh, gas tax that was imposed and how fees are gonna go up at the DMV, that's a result because the California State Legislature cannot, i- is having a difficult time finding sources of revenue to fix our roads. And so this, this some, an example that I'm trying to put out there. If a tax is put on a ballot next year and Moreno Valley approves it, uh, in the staff report, it says, uh, these, these cities that I mentioned before, they get up to a million or over. Coachella is getting four million estimated in tax revenue to put back into the city. We can use that money to fix our roads. You know how bad they are, we all drive on them every single day. And then in terms of the fees that we can recoup, we can add more police officers, and correct me, City Attorney, if I'm wrong, but by recouping that, i- in the ordinance, if you go and read it, it says we can, um, we can recoup any costs that are incurred, which would fall in, in line with if we needed to add another police officer or a firefighter or someone into planning or code enforcement. Correct me if I'm wrong. But, uh, we would be able to do that with fees. And then moving on, um, I also saw in the ordinance, and thank you to City Attorney, by the way, for doing this in two weeks, there's a lot of regulation, a lot of rules, a lot of things in that ordinance. For example, audits that are required, that I'm very glad is in there, that the, the city will have power and authority to go in there and request, uh, information such as who is going into these places and purchasing their products, who's going in there, who's working there, employees, who are the owners, who has investments in these businesses, will be able to go in there and request that information. And that's what I wanna see because right now, the illegal dispensaries, we have no idea, even though, uh, where they're required to have medical cards, we don't know if they're asking for them. We don't know if underage kids are going in there and, and, and buying things. We have no idea and we have no power to check on that. And this ordinance will allow us to do that, as well as, uh, they will have to comply with, with fire codes and all of these things. So I'm glad to see that we'll be able to go in there and audit them and inspect them and have oversight over their operations. So that's, that's pretty much all I have to say, and, uh, that's my, that's my belief. Those, that's my point of view on this subject. That, tha- that's the only way we will be able to balance this out. We'll be able to add some police, we'll be able to add some fire, we'll be able to potentially fix roads. We can balance this out because I, I agree with all of you. We don't like this plant, but it's never going away. So what's our best course of action? What's the best way that we can go about this? Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Geiba?
Thank you. Well, first of all, Mike Hestron, uh, does not approve of the legalization of marijuana, so I just wanna make that known. He may have spoke about it, but he's not necessarily in favor of it. I have an old saying my father used to use, "Two wrongs never make one wrong right." Just because alcohol was legalized and we see all the problems that alcohol causes does not necessarily mean that we need to bring another problem into our city as well. One of the concerns from the district attorney's office is how the black market actually starts with those who have the legal component to grow the material, and then they ship it out to their other cartels, to other states and cities. So what you do is effectively you make, uh, Moreno Valley, uh, the, the marketplace for moving it to other locations under those conditions. I think the attorney said it very well when he said we could just give them a flat tax, but we really don't know how much they're really selling, so, uh, they could be making a lot more money. And, and, and here's what I keep hearing, "It's about the money, it's about the money, it's about the money." Well, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I don't, I, I don't think the money is so important over the health and welfare of our children and our young in our cities. And to add another burden on top of that is not worth it. We already have medical marijuana in place for the medical needs and concerns. You already are able to grow six plants, you can use that for any kind of use you want. So I don't see why you have to keep going down that, uh, that hill over and over and over. Joel, thank you, I, I agree with you. When you remove a taboo, it becomes more commonplace. And none of the laws, rules, regulations that we have in place now for anything that we do in this city, speed limits, how many times do I get information, you know, you get a stop sign, they're running the stop sign. So it's behavior, here's the problem. The societal behavior is what's causing your problems. We legalize gambling in some forms. Indian, uh, the reservations, they have the, the, they started with bingo and then they went on to more gambling. And gambling has become a very, very, very prominent problem in our, in our, in our folks because it's been illegal. They can go and do it whatever they want, so we have a lot of people who are addicted to gambling. So there's another thing. So we just keep piling on one thing after another, and I don't believe that that's the proper course of action to take. I would prefer if we just completely, and, and it's okay, I'm still open to listening to other alternatives, but I, I think we've got our neighbors that are in the process of approving this, and I would really like to take the time to watch and see what happens with them. I know a lot of the council members in a lot of these cities where they are approving it. You got Hammont, you got San Jacinto. And, and there's nothing wrong at all for us as a city, as a council, to ban this for another year, don't approve this ordinance, 'cause we can always bring it back, and observe and watch, collect data, information, hold town hall meetings, get a real feel for what the city, 'cause I'm sorry, I represent two-hundred-and-ten-thousand people and over fifty-thousand in my own district. I would like to hear more of what they have to say. Because if I ask you to raise your hands in here and ask you how many of you live in Moreno Valley, probably a small fraction that's in this audience right now actually lives in Moreno Valley. So there's a component of personalities coming to my city wanting to make money from my city, and they have a very vested interest. And right now, I don't know whether that's the best interest. And I'd like to find out from my residents what they feel is the best interest. And there's nothing wrong with that. So, um, I, 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 as I agree with Dave Marquez over there, is that we need more time to study this. We really haven't had the time to study it. We had a study session that was, didn't put out all the information that it should have put out. We have this meeting, which still has a lot of questions about the, the validity of, um, regulating all this and what it's gonna do for the future of our city. I, I think we just should just put the resolution, 'cause once you, once you approve this, it's just a second reading. You've started the ball rolling by approving this resolution tonight, which can be approved in first reading at another time, uncertain to the future. And it gives us time to collect information and to speak with those people who have all their concerns and to get all the data. And, uh, Mr. Cabrera said it rightly. You did this in two weeks. Good on ya, I guess, but there's probably a whole lot more that could've come out if you'd had a lot more time to get it done. So, um, that's the way I sit right now. I'm not really, um, I'd rather just put the ban on it for a year and then work on the problem. And I think you said it too, Martin, is that as long as we, as long as we put an, or, in place before the expiration of the timeline, we can permanently ban it or we can move on with the ordinance. It's that simple, there's nothing difficult about it. I don't see the rush, I really don't see the rush to get an ordinance in place and everything. Currently, right now, we have an ordinance in place. It says you are illegal on any facets of marijuana. And to me, it seems much simpler for us to say, "You're illegal, shut you down," than to say, "Okay, let's come in and audit you, we wanna take a look at your books." And, and put into place all these regulations that make it much more difficult to actually control what's going on because people find ways to get around things. And now you've got a stopgap here and a new ordinance adjustment here, and it's a waste of, of time. It's easier to just ban it completely. And I think, Martin, we've done a good job of finally putting things into place where we can actually shut these guys down a lot quicker than we used to, especially that one we just, you just sent, uh, information on it. And by the way, uh, Providence Bank says, "Thank you." So, uh, anyway, um, I, I could belabor that point, but that's where I'm standing. This is, this is not something that we need to move quickly on. This is not something really I believe my city needs in here, but I'd like to hear from my residents and I'd like to see the results of how my fellow, uh, folks down there. And just because everybody's watching us doesn't mean that we can't stop and watch them for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Geiba. I think it's inevitable, a- as far as, you know, I think a lot of us, you know, obviously don't want any of this to be, you know, given to our children or anything like that. And I think that's what some of the people, uh, mentioned. Either they don't really understand, you know, the state law, or it's a fallacy that they're pointing out. Because in reality, you know, the state law already says that starting January first, you know, that it will be, uh, legal, the recreational part, but that there's rules. Okay, you know, six hundred feet away from schools, you know, um, no one under the age of twenty-one. You can't be roaming around the City of Moreno Valley intoxicated publicly. You'll be arrested, just like it is with alcohol. So I think that's a fallacy, um, that some people are kinda using. I think someone, uh, mentioned, uh, fear mongering. I think that was the professor that kinda mentioned that point. But I also wanna mention that I do believe that the city has spoken already. And it was, uh, during our election in two thousand sixteen. And during that election, the, the, the citizens of California voted, and also that included the citizens of Moreno Valley. And I believe it passed sixty-four percent within Moreno Valley. So the residents have spoken already. So I think the residents have spoken that they already want it, um, or at least the majority. So why not have things in place, regulation, rules, so that we can also get the revenue, but then at the same time, make sure that it's safe for our community? So I believe that's what this ordinance does. I believe that it provides a safety measure. It has, uh, several steps, uh, for the city to audit, uh, the businesses. And I think we need to, uh, move forward on that. It's going to provide, uh, the extra revenue for our city. And that's, you know, I know, uh, Councilmember Cabrera mentioned, um, you know, if it passes, you know, at the state ballot, we can get an additional tax. But I wanna remind the public and everyone that by passing it even just now, let's say, for example, or whenever they're issued the permits, we will receive, uh, revenue already from these businesses. And that's in the form of property tax, that's right away, in the form of property tax, sales tax, and then also the fees i- in order to recover our costs. So you can have, um, a, a mechanism in place where, uh, we can have certain fees that these businesses have to pay. And with those fees, we can have extra officers, uh, for public safety purposes. In fact, other cities have actually done that. So on one hand, we can actually increase public safety, uh, by passing this ordinance and getting that revenue. And yes, you know, they will have to monitor some of those stores and, and, and those things, but you know what? Having that extra patrol, that's great. And, and they're not gonna be, be there twenty-four-seven. Obviously, they're gonna be roaming around and doing other types of work, just like, for example, we have our commercial vehicle officers. Uh, or we have our traffic, uh, officers, our pop officers as well. They're not always just doing that. You know, if they get called, uh, uh, if there's a major emergency, they're gonna go ahead and respond. So it's an increase in public safety, that's what I believe. And then, obviously, once the tax passes in November, then we can have that additional money for even more public safety as well, or other programs, uh, for the city, for the residents. I do think, um, it's, it will provide a variety of jobs. I actually took a tour of a facility in Los Angeles, and I was actually quite amazed at the operation that they had. I mean, they had several departments, you know, just kinda like the city is functioning here. They had actual departments, it was very professional, uh, accountants, they had, um, human resources. So it was very, very professional. So I think it, it can provide, uh, in that respect, uh, some jobs as well. And then finally, I, I think it, it actually helps, uh, public safety because we'll be able to increase the, the amount of public safety. As far as the ban, um, because that was the second item, I think that, you know, we need to move as far as, you know, the regulation and the land use. I think that we need to move a little fast, you know, as far as, you know, the public's already weighed in with, uh, voting, their comments. So, I mean, I would prefer, you know, like Mayor Pro Tembaca said, either a, uh, January date or the five-month, you know, expedited route that you guys mentioned, uh, there. Because I think it's already there, it's inevitable that it's going to happen. Let's collect on that revenue. Why are we gonna let the boat pass us? Because that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna go to other cities, Hemmett, uh, San Jacinto, all these, these other cities and invest millions and millions of dollars in operations in those cities. And then as a city, we won't get that revenue for our roads, for our officers, to improve the City of Moreno Valley. So I think the expedited route is good, the, the five-month one. You know, that's just my opinion. Okay, so, um, I'll go ahead and leave it at that, and then I'll, uh, entertain motions. City Attorney?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers, just to answer Mayor Pro Tem's question and also just remind you again pertaining to the ban. First of all, the, the provision with regard to second extension being the last extension for only one year is contained in our section nine-point-oh-two-point-zero-five-oh of the municipal code. And it specifically says that two extensions are available, second one can be for one year, but it's the last extension. The, the reason that we're asking for the full time of that extension is not because we intend to take that much time to put the, both regulations to place, but because we can't come back to you to extend it again, and it gives us a, and the council, um, basically a safety net. In the event something goes wrong in the process. And it's six months, not five months. I, I would hate to have the council in a position where, where an ordinance, where we're precluded from extending it, the ban lapses. In theory, the illegally operating dispensaries are now have an argument that they're legally operating. There will be a lot of things that could go wrong if city was without regulation, be it a ban or regulations that were in the process of installing. So my recommendation to you is that you provide us with the, the one-year extension with the clear understanding that we're gonna move as fast as we can. Community Development Director outlined the expedited five-month process, and, and we're gonna set out on that process. But in the event something goes wrong, it would be my recommendation that we have a, a safety margin which allows us to continue to operate. And also as a reminder, just as the other extension and the ordinance, uh, we need four of you to vote in favor of it. It's a four-fifth majority.
For the ban?
Correct.
And then, um, the other question I have, um, go ahead, were you gonna say something? Okay, so I'll leave that at that. All right, so, um, one thing, what, you know what, let's take it at, uh, in peace here. So let's do A1. It says ordinance adding chapter five-point-zero-five, commercial cannabis activity permitting process. I'll, um, entertain any motion. And please, uh, go ahead and say your motion.
Okay, um, I would make a motion that we...
Okay, I would make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendation under A1. Number one, A1, 1A, I'm sorry, and three.
And three is the direct staff to prepare proposed ballot measure that would levy a cannabis commercial activity tax in Moreno Valley for the November 2018 ballot.
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
Let's go ahead and just vote on this one first. Just do a voice vote.
Marquez and Gaiba voted no.
Okay, so the motion passes, and then we're going to move to item A2, which is the resolution extending an ordinance, 916 banning all commercial cannabis activity in the city. And before I just get to making that motion, I understand for the public too, it's a little confusing. Why, why do we have an ordinance saying, you know, that we're going to allow it, or we're moving towards this direction, right? And then all of a sudden, we have one that says extending a ban. It really should have been kind of separate, but just with everything that kind of happened, you know, ended up at the same meeting. So I know that could be a little confusing. But this is basically to extend the ban until we get the other ordinance in place, the one that just passed. Yes, and this one says, this is the current recommendation is for a year. Okay, so there's no motion?
Want to make a motion?
Okay. Go ahead and speak into the microphone so it could be recorded.
I make that motion.
And this is for the one year?
Twelve months, yes.
Yeah, I believe it is for one year, right? It is for the one year.
Well, on the agenda, it reads that until a permanent regulation can be adopted.
Whatever comes first, it's one year, or when the, when the regulation is adopted, then that obviously expires the ban.
This is A1.
That's A1.
We haven't voted. We haven't voted, City Clerk.
Okay.
A1 was 3/2. We're on A2. And this one needs four votes, correct, City? Okay.
Okay, you can vote now.
Okay, and it's three yeses, one no, and one abstention? So it doesn't, I'll make a substitute motion. I'll make a substitute motion that we extend, because obviously this one didn't go through, that we extend a resolution till March 1st, 2018. And that's five months, the expedited route. Actually, let's do, is it six? Okay, it's six months?
Five months if we start with November would put us at April 1st.
Okay. Let's try April 1st, and then see if that passes, and then if not, we'll, we'll continue with a different substitute motion, I won't close it. Okay, Councilmember Cabrera seconds it. And this is for April 1st?
Roll call, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gaiba?
No.
Councilmember Marquez?
No.
Well, it fails already, right there, it's failed. Any other substitute motions? If not, it fails. So, okay, it failed. All right. Okay, we have to talk in the days. Okay, so we're going to move on to city council requests and communications. Any closing comments? You can go ahead and make those. I will still entertain a substitute motion if anybody's.
I did.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I would strongly recommend that you reconsider and provide us with another motion that will pass.
Our night, I tried to do that.
The October 30th is the end date of the current ban. Absent your affirmative action tonight, we will have several issues to deal with on November 1st. So I would strongly urge that you attempt to find a compromise that everybody, or at least four of you can live with and, and move forward with that.
Well, I, the substitute motion would be to, for one year or before, or at the time that the new ordinance is adopted. So that can be as short as is necessary, but as long as is necessary, which I think was your original intention, am I correct on that, Martin?
That was already voted down, right?
That motion, that is what the resolution provides for, that's the original motion.
Okay, then my motion would be for 11 months instead of a year.
Okay. City Clerk?
Second?
Second.
And we voted.
Allow one more substitute motion, and then I'm closing it, and that's it? We already voted.
It was no?
It was no. Okay. It was, go ahead and announce it.
Why don't you do a roll call, or if you have the results, go ahead and announce them.
Yeah, I, I didn't, it didn't come up on my screen.
It came up on mine. Okay, so it was Gaiba that moved it, Ulysses that seconded it, Marquez, those three voted for it, and then Baca and Gutierrez voted against. I can read it right here, it's on mine. It's weird, it's not showing, huh?
No, it's not, that's what's really difficult. One more substitute motion, we'll make it for 10 months. As he said, this is the last substitute motion, and then he won't entertain any more. So I'll go to 10 months, that gives you plenty of time, Martin, and the staff to work on it. And still 10 months, or whenever you get the ordinance in place. Dave, do you second it?
I second it.
I make a motion for seven months.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, calling for the vote, City Clerk?
The second motion would go first, that's the substitute motion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm calling for that one. Madam Clerk?
Okay.
No.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Can we just clarify, is this 10 months or seven?
It's seven months.
Seven months, yes.
Seven months, okay. Yeah, I thought it was 10 months.
No, we were done that a while ago.
Down to seven.
We're at seven months.
My vote was no.
Okay, it's not going to pass.
No, no, I'll rephrase that or change my vote, that's no, no.
Now the first motion, the second motion failed, now the first motion.
Now the first motion was for 10 months.
For 10 months.
Councilmember Gaiba?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
No.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
No.
Mayor Gutierrez?
No.
Okay, we're going to go to closing comments, city council requests and communications.
No more ban on A1?
And we'll go ahead and go to closing comments, so if anybody has any comments, you can make those comments at this time.
I think I will. May I?
Sure.
Because my little light, my thing never comes up.
And we're going to try to get that fixed.
So my closing comment's very simple, what we just voted for now today, at the end of this month, we will no longer have a ban on marijuana in our city, is that correct?
Okay, it's closing comments.
That's my comment.
I know it's closing, okay.
It's a very good comment.
It's yours. Councilmember Marquez, any closing comments? Okay, none? Mayor Pro Tembaca, any closing comments?
No.
Yes, I just want to say I'm pretty disappointed that we did not extend the ban. And if possible, I would like City Attorney to elaborate on what will be the repercussions since we will not be able to vote on extending a ban before October, before the end of October.
City Attorney?
The original ordinance prohibits medical marijuana. That prohibition is going to remain in place. The urgency ordinance, which added prohibition on commercial adult-use marijuana, will lapse on October 30th, unless, and I'm going to double check one thing, and that is, I am not certain that an abstention under these circum, generally, an abstention is a yes vote. Under these circumstances, I am not certain that that's the case, that's why I asked for additional votes. I will check the law, and if in fact, and under these circumstances, an abstention is a yes, then we had an affirmative vote on the first round.
I'll rechange it to a no.
Well, at this point in time, it's recorded as an abstention.
Well, it's recorded, now it's a no, I'll change it to a no.
The state law will permit a adult use of marijuana, starting presumably January 1st. We will most likely be before you sometime between now and then, attempting to give you another opportunity to take some action on this. Absent that, there are several lawsuits that are pending against illegally operating marijuana dispensaries. There are still illegally operating, whether the ban is in place or not, they're in violation of state law. But absent some action by the council to extend the ban, the horizon's going to get difficult to maneuver through during this time.
My comments, because the meeting hasn't adjourned yet. So I think, you know, well, we tried five months, we tried six months, we tried various ones, we couldn't get at least four. You know, I don't know what other combination I guess you can come up with. But I think that in general, I think we have spoken, and I think the residents have spoken, especially in the election, that we want this to be regulated, we want the revenue, and so that way we can help our, you know, fix our roads, for our public safety. There was a majority that spoke here tonight, and I think that we need to move ahead with that. So it is going for the next scheduled, scheduled meeting. And I don't think it really matters to have a ban while we're having that at the same time. So that's just my thoughts, okay? I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting tonight at 8:43 PM. Thank you all for attending.